Good morning and welcome, welcome to October. Today's the first of October, isn't it? And welcome to the Mesa City Council Study Session for the first of October. The first item of business is to acknowledge that it is Deanne Mickelson's birthday. Happy birthday, Deanne. Yeah. This is our Mesa City Clerk who does a great job. We appreciate you. Thank you for all you do.
I have a suspicion she'll strike that for the minutes.
Well, let's make sure that it stays in. Okay. Thank you, Deanne. Happy birthday. The next item on our agenda is to review the agenda for our regular city council meeting that will be this next Monday. I have to confess that both Mr. Loon and I are going to be gone on a business trip to Mexico City and so will Vice Mayor Kavanaugh.
Not to Mexico City.
Not on the Mexico City trip, but on another trip. So, Mr. Richen says gracefully agreed to conduct the meeting.
Lead the inmates.
That's right.
It's gonna be really short.
That's right.
We're gonna break your record from last week.
No, well, you know, good luck with that. I'm gonna try to incite some rebellion and get people to come and complain for a couple hours at your next meeting, so, sorry, I'm gonna miss it. So, the meeting, let's look at that agenda. The first few items are liquor license applications and then purchase contracts under item four.
I just wanted to make a quick comment, Mayor, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Item 4A, the shredding services and the, I wanted to note, the Center for Habilitation is a nonprofit that has social enterprises and they, there's a lot of folks that have a hard time holding jobs and they do a lot of great job training there with the development of disabled and the severely mentally ill and other folks. And so, it's really neat to see us helping that organization through some of the services that we need to acquire. So, it's just, I just wanted to note that and how important that is to some of the work that these nonprofits are doing, to have these social enterprises that helps them pay for programming. So, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Thompson.
Question for Jim. Well, we need to pull this off of the consent agenda and do it as a separate item because I am on the board for TCH.
Profit and you're not paid, then we wouldn't.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. There are other purchase contracts under Agenda Item 4. And then, Agenda Item 5 are various resolutions and there is a subdivision plan on Agenda Item 6. If there's no other questions regarding Monday's agenda, then the next item on this meeting's agenda is to hear a presentation, discuss and provide direction on the downtown Mary Main Street event. Steve, I think you're helping us know the status on this. This is an exciting event. We're anxious to hear more of the details.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. So, I want to kind of start just with a little bit of history and I think Councilmember Kavanaugh will probably be able to fill in if I missed any of this because I think he was on the council when this originally started.
I think I was one of the original Christmas elves.
Wow. Okay, we'll move on to the next slide. But, the original event started in 1998 and it was a celebration of the remodeling of downtown sidewalks and streets and it was called Mary Main Street. It was a weekend event. It was very successful. Five years later, in 2003, it had grown to over 35,000 attendees and lots and lots of activities for families and kids. And, of course, they had the Christmas lights and they had Santa Claus and rides and all sorts of fun things. It was the largest holiday festival in December in the East Valley. And 2005 was actually the last year that the event was held, so it's been over 10 years since we had the event. So, where did that leave us? Where we are now is really that there is no large coordinated winter holiday event, Christmas-type event in Mesa or in the East Valley, really. And so, the question is, and one of the purposes of Mary Main Street was bringing people from the Temple Light Festival down at the Mormon Temple into the downtown. You know, we have been told that the estimates are close to 1 million. I put in this slide that it's about 500,000. I was trying to be conservative. So, how do we capture even a portion of those visitors and bring them into the downtown area? We have some signature events that are wildly successful, Arizona Celebration of Freedom, our two Celebrate Mesa events that are held in the west and east parts of the town and then Spark, the Festival of Creativity held in the spring, but we really don't have anything in November and December that is kind of a large community event. So, there came a point where really we needed to act on this. I started in January of 2007 and without exception, the biggest question that I had regarding events was, you know, Mary Main Street. Is Mary Main Street gonna come back? I know I've had discussions with council members. Early on, one of the things that Councilmember Glover talked about was, you know, Mary Main Street and how significant it was and I think he lived through it. I wasn't from Mesa at the time, so he saw the type of event and many of you probably saw the type of event that that was. Dave Short said that that is the number-one question with regard to events that they get and inquiries about events in downtown is Mary Main Street. So, we received direction to begin investigating and doing some research on what would it take to bring back a holiday event, a Christmas-type event in downtown. Downtown Mesa Association has been involved, Parks and Rec, Commercial Facilities, Mesa Arts Center, and we've had numerous meetings and discussions, kind of talking about what would that look like. So, here's kind of where we are and what the proposed event is and it's basically, we're bringing back Mary Main Street. And we want to keep the same name because there is great PR value in it. It was very successful. There's great goodwill associated with it. Obviously, our brand and marketing would be that it's bigger and better, you know, kind of a fun thing, this isn't your grandma's Mary Main Street. And the idea is that it's not just one weekend. It starts the weekend of Thanksgiving and goes all the way through New Year's. So, we would have four weekends of celebrations from Thanksgiving leading up to Christmas, but we would have ongoing activities that would start on the 27th and go all the way to January 3rd into New Year's. And we have kind of a proposed band, brand or logo. This is a logo that Mark Cornell, our graphic, our city's graphic artist, designed for us. I think it's great. It is, it has the downtown feature of the light poles and which kind of speaks of being in downtown and then obviously the Main Street. It's very bright and cheerful. So, that is kind of our proposed brand that we want to look forward to using. So, here are the proposed activities and I'm gonna go through three activities that are weekend-only activities for those four weekends and then the next two activities that I talk about are the ones that are kind of ongoing. So, we have a food truck forest that would be at Pioneer Park and one of the purposes of that is to bring people across from the Temple Lights into the east end of Mary Main Street because Mary Main Street is basically from Pioneer Park all the way down to Country Club. And so, we want to bring them across into the park. They'll be, it'll be very decorative, lots of lights, food trucks, other activities there for kids. That's where we bring them across and we can, you know, give them information about Mary Main Street because we really can't do that on the temple grounds. So, food truck forest, we had an experience with doing some, kind of a test pilot project a year ago during Christmas lights and we had a few food trucks over there on the east end of Pioneer Park and had a lot of positive feedback from, from the attendees to Temple Lights that came across the street. We had some businesses that were a little frustrated and one of them said, "Look, it, put it on the west side of the park and we're fine." And so, we were sensitive about that and designed to have that on the west side. All those businesses that are over there, I think there's three or four of them, are gonna be invited to participate in it. We want them to enjoy it as well, but you've got three, maybe four businesses for a million visitors over the time that the Temple Lights are there, so we feel like this is a great supplement and a great amenity to add there. Community performances at the Mesa Arts Center, Alliance Pavilion. There are presenters that, and performers that would love to present at the Temple Lights, but the Temple Light performances are religious songs and programming and the secular-type programming doesn't take place there. And they told us, they have lists of people and groups that, that they have to turn away because they only have so much, so many spots and we'd love to have those groups come and perform at the Mesa Arts Center on the Alliance Pavilion. As well as, I know that Mesa Arts Center has been talking to Mesa Public Schools about possibly having them own one of the nights, one of the weekends and have their groups come down and perform. They also have other kind of activities for kids as well as their existing performing live series and other things that are going on that are paid, events that are going on at the different theaters there. So, again, this is a great opportunity to bring people into downtown and to kind of experience the Mesa Arts Center. So, the next weekend-type events that we have are Downtown Mesa Street Market and that's from Center Street down to Country Club and it's movies on Main, they have Mac Fest going on, there's reindeer dash scavenger hunt, gingerbread house making. Some of these things are things that happen in the old Mary Main Street. They also have Santa Claus moving from kind of business to business. Those businesses are kind of owning, having Santa Claus there, they have selfie stations, they have a lot of fun activities that are planned there. And you can see, we've got proposed names. Food Truck Forest is Jack Frost Food Truck Forest. The Mac is Holiday Happenings at the Mac. Downtown Main Street Market is Santa's Marketplace. One of the things they've also talked about and they're researching right now is having a SantaCon. And for those of you that don't know what a SantaCon is, it's a, it's a...
Wait, wait, is there anybody who doesn't know what a SantaCon is?
Anybody?
I'm just kidding. Does there anybody who knows what a SantaCon is?
Okay, okay.
Okay.
A Santa, it's kind of like Comic-Con, but it's SantaCon, so people just come dressed as Santa Claus and you just choose a night and everybody comes down dressed as Santa Claus and there's thousands of them throughout the country, so...
This could be kind of disturbing for the young children to come down.
Yeah, yeah. It'll confuse them. It's not a children's event.
Okay.
Because you don't want to confuse them, so...
SantaCon, alright.
So...
Nice.
Alright, and these next...
I'm sorry, Mr. Kavanaugh has a question.
Yeah, in connection with Marketplace, one of the other ideas that, that we should explore is something that Arlington, Texas has developed over a number of years. I served with people on NLC Board that liked our Mary Main Street idea and had visited it in the past and what they ended up doing is, they didn't sister city, they twinned with a city in Germany and they've created, they have created like a month-long Christmas Kindle market that's similar to the Kindle markets in Europe at holiday time. They do it over the course of a month and partner with their downtown nonprofit, United Way in the City does that and they have found that has grown each year and so, that's, that could be, again, another facet of the Marketplace that will draw people in because certainly in Germany, it's very much a tradition to go and have fun, have a day at the Christmas market or the Kindle markets. But Arlington is really, has found it to be a very successful way to help grow their holiday festival.
Did you say Arlington?
Arlington, Texas, yes.
Alright. Thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Finter.
Excited about the idea. Can't wait to take the grandkids down there. Is there an opportunity, maybe you've already talked about it, about getting some free passes for those days so people can get on the light rail and just hop off on a short, you know, the very short segment?
We are working with Light Rail and actually, I think that Vice Mayor has been, has been asked to see if we can't encourage them to facilitate that. It's a little bit challenging because there's different entities that are involved in it, but Vice Mayor might have more details about that.
Right. It's something that our staff is, right, informally talking with staffs of the other communities to have something similar to what the Phoenix Suns games, you know, your ticket serves as a, as a boarding pass. And we're trying to explore the idea of, at the five Mesa stations, that maybe you buy a discounted ticket for what he's gonna talk about next in terms of the skating rink, maybe that gives you a free pass to go back and forth between the Mason Drive parking ride, get people downtown, but it's not something that, Valley Metro has like a formal policy yet, but I think if you talk to some of the other communities, Tempe and Phoenix, when they have, they have their holiday festivals or special festivals around throughout the year, it may be something that can work out as long as you, you have to work out some kind of like revenue sharing with, with Valley Metro. That's how it works with the Phoenix Suns because Fairbox Recovery is a big priority for Metro, but I think there's some opportunities to, to work it out, to kind of make it fun and encourage people to get on and off the light rail, to come from the Temple Light Celebration, to, one, to experience light rail, but come to the other events throughout the different stations in the Marketplace.
Mr. Loon.
Also, Steve, I was thinking that maybe we might want to do a Mary Mesa wrap on the light rail to get people from Phoenix to come to the area and then maybe have a Santa Claus on the, on the light rail, conducting the train.
Yeah, you know, we have had some conversations with Light Rail. I know at one point, the mayor talked about wrapping a whole thing and making it be like the Polar Express. It's obviously, there's some costs involved, but, but we are trying to, we're talking with Metro on some opportunities to market, so, but yes, thank you very much. It's a great idea. So, let me just move on with these couple other, these features that are on the screen now are the features that are kind of ongoing. The first is a city holiday or Christmas tree and it's the Mary Main Street tree. And basically, this is a three-and-a-half-story, commercial-grade Christmas tree. It is an artificial tree. It has an 18-foot diameter, it has 2,600 LED color, multi-colored lights. It's a beautiful tree and we have approached the Chamber of Commerce about basically being the sponsor and helping us raise the money to purchase this. It'd be a huge draw to downtown. Three-and-a-half stories is basically 32 to 35-foot tree. So, something that we've kind of missed in our downtown area. The idea would be to put it kind of around McDonald and Main to help draw people kind of even more down into where those downtown businesses are. So, that's kind of what the idea is with that tree. And then, lastly, Vice Mayor talked about this and that is to, to have an ice skating rink as part of this. And this is, this is a 4,500-square-foot real ice skating rink. It fits about 125 to 150 people on it. The capacity over the time of the event is about 35,000 ice skaters. That would be during the operating times that it was at full capacity all the time. So, that, the idea is to have that at City Plaza. It would be at the parking lot east of City Plaza and we would turn that into what we're calling a Winter Wonderland Ice Rink. We'd have a stage there, there'd be a food court, we'd invite some of these downtown businesses to sell coffee, hot chocolate, cider and other types of things there, especially during the weekends, during the weeknights. Probably not as many vendors there, but we feel like this would be a huge draw. It would be the only ice skating rink in the East Valley. There's one down at Cityscape and then there's one at the Princess, but it's a, it'd be a great feature. We think it'd be really well-received, so... So, here's the event by the numbers that we're proposing. There's four weekends of celebration, 40 days of ice skating, there's 400 performers, artists and vendors is our estimate. Again, the 4,400-square-foot ice skating rink and then we estimate that the first year we could have upwards of 40,000 people attend the event. And so, here's the big question about funding. This is the estimated fundraising and our target for fundraising, a title sponsor that we will next week be able to make an announcement. We're finalizing the details, but that's a $50,000 sponsorship for a title sponsor. I think that's the largest title sponsorship that we've ever had, at least since I've been here, in the nine years I've been here. Corporate sponsors, our target is 100,000 and we've already have six verbal commitments for $20,000 and these are companies that are willing to step up and be part of it. And it's a pretty easy sell. Most of the people we talked to are very excited to be a part of it. They remember Mary Main Street. It's 40 days of exposure for them, so it's a great thing for them. And then, also, the ice skating fees, $25,000 to $30,000, I think on the low end of, for the ice skating fees. Now, I just want to explain that the $10 per hour fee seems like a lot. That is a Friday, Saturday, when, when we're at max capacity, that's the going rate, is $10 to $15 throughout the country. But, we'll have discount coupons and there'll be family nights and packages and things like that so that it can get down to, somebody could skate for $5, but the, the standard rate would be $10 and we still feel like $25,000 to $30,000 is a, is a low, but a good number for fees. So, that brings us to about $175,000 of sponsorships to handle the event. We have Parks and Rec Commercial Facilities that is owning the food truck forest, Mesa Arts Center is owning their portion of it, and then Downtown Mesa Association, Ultimate Imaginations is doing the Marketplace and then they are the, they have the rental contract with the company that's bringing, bringing in the ice rink. And that's it. So, just questions, any other feedback from the mayor and council?
Thank you, Mr. Wright. It's an exciting idea. I think it's a, the idea of doing something in downtown Mesa during the holidays is just seems like such a natural thing to me. I'm always, the last few years, as I sit at the Celebration of Freedom and I look at the 40,000 to 50,000 people that are anxious to come downtown and participate in an event on a hot summer night and then I, I look, you think about the potential, all the people that want to be participating in that and then you throw the beautiful weather of December into the equation and to me, it just seems like it's a sure thing, so it makes a lot of sense. Thank you for the, for these great, fleshing out these great ideas. Counsel, any direction or questions about this? Okay. Thank you very much, Steve. Very exciting. Next item on our agenda is to be here, presentation, discuss and provide direction on city insurance Gentlemen, good to see you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Jim Smith, here with you with Mark Steadman, Deputy City Attorney, and Gary Manning, the HR Director, and we're here to talk to you about insurance issues, specifically the, what's called the PPL or Property and Public Liability Trust Fund and workers' compensation. This is, this slide's a general overview of the PPL fund and what it does and the last three bullet points really sort of highlight, it's the disbursements include liability claims and cases, which Mark and his group over the last year have had an exceptional year and have done just a great job. There's also disbursements for attorney's fees and litigation costs and insurance premiums. And we're here to talk about that last bullet point, so really this conversation is about that one aspect of the PPL fund today. So, there's four types of coverage for the PPL insurance coverage and you can see it there on the slide, the excess liability, property, aviation and cyber risk and we'll talk about each of these here a little bit. This slide gives you a sense of the cost of the insurance over the last several years. The majority of these costs come from the excess liability. By, by way of example, last year was approximately 600,000 of that cost was the excess liability coverage, so that's the lion's share of, of the cost for the PPL insurance premiums. Excess liability insurance, it is what its sort of name implies, the coverage that we have has a $3 million self-insured retention, which is another word for deductible effectively and so, the trust fund ensures up to the 3 million and past the 3 million, the excess carrier kicks in and that coverage goes from 3 million to 50 million. And so, that's the current excess liability insurance that the city has. As far as comparison, we wanted to show you the different SIRs from different cities. We think Mesa sits in sort of the right position for its size and also the trust fund and when looking at it, Mesa has a $3 million SIR, if you see. Tucson also does, other cities have two. Phoenix is the only one that goes larger and obviously is substantially larger, as you can see there on that slide. Jumping to property insurance, the city has over a billion dollars in property assets that we insure. The current coverage and deductible is $50,000, except for auto, it's $25,000 and we have a $300 million per occurrence coverage. Airport and aircraft insurance is one of the, is the one insurance in which they actually insure on a multi-year basis and so, I'll jump down to the second bullet point, the aircraft property and liability. That's actually a renewal policy and that's on PD's aircraft and it's both property and liability insurance and that's a renewal. Jumping back up to the top bullet point, the airport liability, that's for Falcon Field and we're looking to, for new policies on that on a multi-year basis, again. Cyber risk insurance, we actually, we started this a number of years ago. We're, you know, ahead of the curve on this one and we increased our policy limits last year up to $10 million, which we think is appropriate, again, and so, we're looking to keep this insurance, which now is becoming sort of standard in the industry. Unfortunately, we were ahead of the curve on this one and we've had it for a while now. Recommendations and some next steps. So, we've come to you early in the process. We, we're out and get quotes, we're looking to do it the same SIR and the same deductibles for the, obviously, the same policies and coverages and we intend to come back to you in November with the actual approval. So, we're coming to you a couple months here, a month in advance before we come back to you. And I'm gonna jump to workers' comp and Gary's gonna talk to you about some workers' comp and bond issues.
Mayor and Council, the last two items on the agenda relate to our workers' compensation program and how we annually go out for workers' compensation, excess insurance, as well as the purchase of a surety bond. As you're aware, we do have an ex, a workers' compensation trust fund from which all of our workers' compensation claims and costs are paid. Lion's share of those, of course, coming from medical and from lost wages. The excess workers' compensation insurance really is a catastrophic insurance that protects the city in case of catastrophic injuries. Our current deductible or self-insurance retention is $1 million, which is where some of the other cities are as well and we would recommend that we maintain that $1 million. There have been increases in insurance workers' compensation premiums. As medical costs rise, so do the insurance premiums for that excess insurance. We also need to go out and purchase a surety bond. Because the city of Mesa is self-insured, the Industrial Commission of Arizona does require us to have a surety bond that ensures we're gonna meet our fiduciary obligations to pay both current and future workers' compensation claims. And over the years, the amount that those surety bonds have had to cover have also increased, largely related to medical cost increases as well. So, just in terms of recommendations, we're also gonna be obtaining quotes both for excess insurance as well as the surety bond, maintaining the SAR where it is today and then we'll be back to you also in December with our recommendations on a carrier to be able to accomplish those two things.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any questions, counsel? Mr. Finter.
Just wanted to take a minute, had the presentation offline and was able to talk with our city attorney and others. There's a tremendous amount of good work that's going on in the city attorney's office, especially with those that handle the litigation that comes against the PPL trust and others. I can say, it is my belief that there's been millions of dollars saved by good work of Mark Steadman and Lisa that's back there. We appreciate all the good work that you do in treating people fairly, but protecting the citizens of Mesa, so really appreciate the good work there and didn't want that to slide by when you're, when you have so many positive things happening there, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Yes, amen to that. Thank you, Mr. Steadman. Thank you, your staff. You do, I know we've had a great year in terms of defending the city and like Mr. Finter says, it's important that we be fair to people and I, but I think that's certainly the attitude that we take on these types of claims. Counsel, any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen. We think you're on the right track. We appreciate that. Next item on our agenda... Next item on our agenda is Agenda Item 3, information regarding the job order contracting projects. Counsel, any questions regarding those? Seeing none, moving on to Item 4, acknowledge receipts of minutes of boards and committees. Is there a motion? Second motion, the second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next item, hear reports on meetings or conferences attended. Counsel, any updates? Hearing none. Moving on to scheduling of meetings and general information. Mr. Brady, what's next for us?
Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned earlier, we'll be having our next study session council meeting on October 5th. We expect at least four of you there. So if someone is not going to be able to make it, let us know soon. Otherwise, we'll then have a study session on that following Thursday. So thank you very much. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, yes. I'm supposed to remind you, there's about 28 minutes left in a pancake breakfast over at the Fire Admin Building to kick off Fire Prevention Month. So if anybody out there is in need of breakfast, hustle over there. Thanks.
Great. I wonder if, can we have an executive session at the fire breakfast? Would that work? Okay. Well, next item on, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Thompson.
Just a reminder for our community too, District 6 is having a fire prevention festival, I guess, that's this Saturday at Baseline and Crisman at the Bash's.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Kavanaugh.
And a reminder, District 3 is having a coffee at the Arizona Museum of Natural History tomorrow morning. And we're, attendees are going to get a preview of some of the new exhibits that are happening at the museum.
Very great. Mr. Luna.
Also a reminder, thank you, Councilmember Thompson. We are having a foodie truck Friday over at La Cendas at the Trailhead Park. It starts at 5 o'clock and it ends at 9 o'clock. So it's at the Trailhead Park at La Cendas.
Great. I went to the last one of those, as I know you did. And there was about five or six food trucks and there were long lines. And so now I understand there's going to be about 13 food trucks. So I think should be a lot of fun. If there's no other questions from counsel, the next item is that I will entertain a motion to enter into an executive session. Thank you. Moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. We are now in the executive session.